All right. Good morning, everyone. Chair will call this meeting to order the first item on our agendas approved the minutes of April 10th. A motion to approve.
So moved.
So second is okay. Any changes to the minutes?
No changes.
All right. All those in favor of adoption indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the votes unanimous. Item two is to discuss electrical and natural gas bids. We got Liam Rex joining us from USource. Liam, good morning.
Morning, everybody. This is Liam.
So we've been forwarded a copy of all these bids. What's going on with the market here, brother?
So, yeah, there's a lot going on. We saw a big run up in the market due to a cold winter. And then a whole lot of volatility around some of the economic changes that are going on. So overall, prices are a bit lower than the current contract. The decrease that we've seen recently in part is a lot due to just the perception that the economy is going to slow down. And when that perception is here, they just think the overall demand for energy is going to be lower in the future. So that's what caused the decrease there. But there's a variety of how suppliers are bidding on the electricity side. There's a new component in pricing in New England that they're calling DASI, which is a daily ancillary service. So it's a daily charge that the ISO New England procures in order to keep the grid operating smoothly. In order to fix that and have a fully fixed deal and with no adjustments, you're paying a little bit of a premium to fix it. And some of the other suppliers that are not fixing it are offering a little bit of a better price. But, you know, BP on the electricity side, if we're looking for a fully fixed, kind of no surprises contract is is looking pretty good. But overall, I think we're looking at a pretty good time to buy in these next few weeks. Pretty good, pretty good discount over where prices would have been about a month ago. So, you know, a lot, a lot of changes in the New England market, kind of the same for the gas side, but prices are staying stubbornly high just due to in New England, it's hard to, it's hard to get natural gas up here. So there's only, there's a limited amount of pipeline capacity coming into New England. And of course, natural gas is kind of the fuel of choice in New England as it is in most areas. So I don't think we're seeing any major pipelines coming in place in New England. So I think these kind of prices in the nine, 10 cent range are going to stick. Whereas several years ago, prices in New Hampshire are more like the six, seven cent range.
Yeah, we got a run going up there. Yeah. So what's, do you have any idea how this thing's going to trend at all? Do you think the natural gas is just going to, because of the restriction in the pipelines supplied to New England, we're just going to see a continuing increase?
Well, so, I mean, if you look at the market now, so if we're looking at gas and electricity pricing, the further you go out, it's a little bit cheaper. So that's just kind of a signal that prices are going to be a bit lower in the in the future, just kind of as, you know, as, as production of natural gas stays high here. I think the capacity, the constrained capacity of natural gas coming into New England is going to keep things propped up to a certain level. So I don't think we'll, I don't think we'll retest the six, seven cent market that we had during COVID. That was, that was really some extenuating circumstances. I think, I think it's a, it's a positive look in the market that when you go out further, it's a bit cheaper. So that something that makes, you know, makes the near term cheaper and, and, you know, I think a lot of people in New England are doing the multi-year contracts these days. And then just like, just one other big point. I know New Hampshire is a bit less of an aggressive renewable state than New England, than Massachusetts. So Massachusetts, there's a big chunk of the price that is attributed to renewable energy standards. There's less of that in New Hampshire, but some of the other price components like fuel security, just different ancillary services that the ISO New England puts in place to make sure that the grid is operating are getting a little bit more expensive.
Yeah, I, I'd like to ask you a question. ISO New England, is there any way, that actually hurts us because New Hampshire has an abundance of power, you know, with Seabrook and
Right, yeah.
And we end up like Granite Ridge is a 720 megawatt plant. And they bid every day and they, I don't know where it's at now, but when I was, when I was researching this, they they were only using, they bid every day or the day before, you know, right when they, when they get the power. So it ends up being 360 megawatts a lot of times. And, and that puts a big hurt on Granite Ridge because, you know, they, you know, they, they have all this capacity, but they can't, you know, they're not, they're not producing. And when you build a plant like that, it should be producing is there. Is there any way to modify that agreement with ISO New England?
Um, so I guess just kind of the way, one of the ways dispatching works as far as, so ISO New England the day before will say, okay, we're, we think we're going to need this many megawatts to satisfy the whole New England grid. And so obviously every day like Seabrook Nuclear is going to bid in at, bid in at zero because, you know, they know they're going to be operating. They know the ISO knows exactly how many megawatts they're going to get out of that. And then so I think it probably depends on the time of year that makes it a viable, you know, really like revenue generating generator. But I don't know the specifics about that project, but usually there, there are certain, you know, if, if there's a generator that's easy to dispatch where, you know, if it's, if it's an expensive time, it's easy to turn it on. And when it's a non-expensive time, it's easy to turn it off. Those are, those are the really important generators that keep prices kind of in check because, you know, we don't want a shortfall in, in electricity supply because that would cause rolling brownouts. But I mean, yeah, there, there's a lot of power produced in New Hampshire. I mean, Seabrook Nuclear is actually owned by our parent company, Nexera Energy. And I know that that's, that's signed up for the next 50 years or so. So if only more nuclear could come online, but I don't think that's happening anytime soon.
What's the rate right now for the bid for megawatt per megawatt?
Um, you're looking for the prices?
Thirty, I, I think when I was researching is around $30 a megawatt.
Um, are you, is that, were you looking at, sorry, is that like, like pricing from the ISO?
Yeah. When, when they bid.
Um, yeah. So I mean, on a, on a nice, cool spring day, we can probably see prices in the $20 to $30 per megawatt hour range. But in New Hampshire, like in January, just because it was really cold and we had some cold snaps, the average price through every single hour of January was like $150. So there's a, there's a big premium on like peak summer pricing and really all winter pricing in New England that kind of levelizes things off pretty, so like the, like if you, if you want, so fixed power right now, just for the electrons, the commodity of the electrons is right around the $65 range probably for, for flat year round power.
That's because of solar and wind? That increases because they first online?
Um, so, yeah, I mean, like during the winter, we'll definitely see less solar production. There's also a lot more natural gas. So only cer, only so much natural gas can come into New England. And in the winter, when that's being burned directly for, for heating, you know, where the, the demand for natural gas in the winter in New England, super high weather for electricity production and also for heating.
So, so Liam, it looks like based on these bids this morning that it's kind of a crap shoot when you look at it. The, the, the shorter term rates are a little, little more money. And then if, you know, if you gamble on two years, then two years. I don't know. I guess we should have a conversation around whether we should, you know, do the one or two year deal. It's, it's, it's kind of a guessing game. My, my, I don't know if I'm right or wrong about that. You can correct me, but it kind of looks like.
I mean, I think just kind of as I'm looking at some of the long-term fundamentals, some of the things that so one thing that could push prices down is if we have a recession, though I do think that the impacts of recession will come through after. So there's a pretty big lag effect there. The, just one, one kind of factor looking out into the future market is the, the way that our country exports natural gas. So liquefied natural gas, you've probably heard LNG being thrown around. Back in 2010 range, the U.S. was a net importer of gas. And now with the shale boom, we're a net exporter. So really liquefied natural gas and the amount of gas that we're exporting as a country has gone from practically zero to something that's approaching 15 or 20% of all of the production of natural gas in the country. And the one thing that the new administration has made very clear is that they want to kind of reduce all the barriers for permitting for those liquefied natural gas plants. So I think the, the demands for gas in the country are going to be greater and greater every year. So, you know, hopefully supply keeps up with that. Hopefully producers see a price environment where they can continue to drill and continue to supply the market with lots of gas. But I think, I think that's a bit of a question mark going forward.
So based on the paperwork we got here, we should divide the conversation up one on electric and one on gas. So it makes it just less confusing. So the, the, so the electrical one, it looks like you guys are recommending a 22 month.
No, that's the old one.
Is that the old one?
That's the old one. There's two pages that we need again.
Yeah, we did 22 months last time.
You're right. Okay. I got you. So what's the
Looks like 20 or 36 or 24.
Right. At the 10.2. I'm looking at the kilowatt hour charge. Yeah. Or, or if you drop down to GenX or G, I don't know how you say it.
Yeah, G, G, GE.
Yeah. I mean, you're in the nines.
Right. For 24 months.
Yeah. So just one note on the, the Jackson Nexera prices is that they have a couple of components that are being treated as adjustable. So if the cost for them to serve those components changes, then they may or may not, you know, adjust your rate in the future. So.
So is BP Energy's price, are those other prices a fixed price without any, you know, hidden fees or costs?
Yeah. I mean, minus, I mean, all for all these prices, if there were a change in law. So if if the ISO were to like have a big framework change or something that was unforeseen by the suppliers, that's something that they could pass through. But that's, that's standard practice. I mean, no one's, no one's going to, these suppliers aren't going to take the risk on, on everything. But as far, as far as a price that, that won't change, I think the BP offering is probably the best.
Yeah.
So then the question becomes whether you lock it in for one or two years.
Well, yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Well, I mean, one, one year, it's basically a flush, right? You know, with what we're paying now.
Paying now, right.
If we did it for two years, at least there'd be some, some, you know, some savings and we could, you know, we can appreciate it, right? In the, in the second.
Yeah. I mean, I, so the, so the, the way the market is structured right now is what we call backwardation. And backwardation is when there's a premium on the near term and you get cheaper as you go further out. So one nice part about a two-year contract is okay if power in 2027 is trading a little bit cheaper than it is in 2026, we can kind of grab that lower price from 2027 and levelize the cost from 2026 to kind of smooth things out. And that's, yeah.
Or you can consider it three year where it drops to
Yeah, right.
1043. And then it goes back up in the fourth year. So it, it, it just seems to me that if you, the way I looked at this last night, and I remember I'm looking at it on my phone because the prices didn't come until past 7:30. You know, it, it looked like, you know, without any, let's put it this way, without any strings attached.
Right. With no strings attached.
Yeah. It looks like, you know,
Whether it's two or three years.
Whether it's two or three years on BP
Right.
is what seems to make sense.
Yeah.
You know, with the three years, you know, will, you know, you'll save some extra. I think it's clearer on the gas. But, you know, on electricity, that's the way it seems, that's the way it seems to me without any, you know, without any strings attached.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, if you, if, if you're, if you're an optimist and you think the economy is going to get rolling again, in the third year, there's going to be a high demand. If, if the country is moving again, it's going to be a high demand for energy.
And if it is, then these prices are going to go up.
Yeah, prices are going to go up.
But, but if we, if we booked in for three years right now, we're guaranteed that the price is going to be less than what it is right now.
Right now.
Right. But on the other hand, the drill baby drill.
Drill baby drill, right.
You're going to, you're going to have abundance of energy. Natural gas is something, it's, it's an extra because, you know, they actually, they burn it off in North Dakota. I mean, they, you know, to the atmosphere, you know.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can shed a little light there. So, I mean, that, that's totally correct. So when we drill for oil, we do get associated natural gas with that. So just kind of in oil wells, you do have some natural gas coming with that. And that's, you know, that's, that's probably about 5% of, of supply of gas. So kind of in that way, it, it, you know, if, if oil is really strong, if oil production is really strong, then we will just get naturally get more gas that way. Just kind of looking back over the last several years of the natural gas production environment. So a lot of the big natural gas drillers are private and they have a kind of a break even number for natural gas at which, okay, if prices are below this number, then we're going to curtail production. If prices are above this number, we're going to keep drilling because we're making great profit. So we have seen producers being pretty receptive to where the price is at. So if, like in COVID, when price was really low, producers cut production because they just couldn't continue to drill at that rate. So just kind of beyond the, I mean, obviously relaxing regulations and, and whole country pushes to drill more is, is certainly something that can increase the level of production. But these are private companies that they're not going to, at the end of the day, they're not going to drill if they're not making money from it.
Hey Liam, this is Gwen. Didn't you tell me when we were on the phone that there was actually people abroad paid higher prices for the LPG? So that's where it tended to go more?
Yeah. So the, the international, so if we're drilling gas here and it's in the $3 to $4 range, which it is now, people are buying it in Europe and Asia for something like $13 or $15. So there's always going to be, so the way it's looking right now, there's certainly going to be, always be the incentive for us to basically max out how much we can export. One issue in New England is that just because it's a constrained market, there are certain times during the winter where we do need to import the foreign flagged gas. So we need to, so basically, you know, gas is leaving Louisiana, it's on a ship and us up in Everett, so there's an import terminal in Everett, Mass. We're like, hey, we actually need this gas because you know, we, we just, we can't get it, we can't get enough through the pipelines. So we're still, us in New England are still often having to pay high prices for that extra gas during the winter. And that's why there's a massive premium in New England on January, February, December prices.
So looking at these prices, if we were to move, what, what's USource's recommendation?
Um, I, I, I mean, I think I, in New England right now, I'm seeing a lot of people go two or three years. I think especially given the market movement, like if we look two or three weeks ago, we'd probably be almost half a cent higher. So I think the two or three year price, especially since it's at a discount too. So I mean, a lot of people have contracted in the same timeframes as, as what you guys are looking at. So it's, it's nice to be able to pull forward some lower pricing, kind of weigh out the volatility of, of the marketplace right now. And kind of get both of those at the same time.
So if we do, so if we did a two-year deal on both, we would be reducing, we actually would be saving some money. But you don't have to, you don't have the, you don't have the, 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 just the volatility, I, I, I don't, I wouldn't want to go any more than two years myself. I just don't. I, I, I did just, my guts just telling me not to be that.
So if we went two years with no strings, that would be BP, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Two, 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 two years, no string on, with, with the, with BP and the two-year deal with the direct energy, I guess, on, on the electrical bolt or.
On the gas.
Yeah. Right, on the gas.
There's a, there's obviously a bigger savings, you know, on the gas.
Right.
I mean, you're talking, you know, just doing the numbers on my head, but you're talking 10%.
You know, the gas, we'd probably, you know, I mean, well, with a restrained market because they can't get gas here. If the economy moves again, you know, the price is going to go up.
Yeah. So if you did two years of gas and two years with electricity
Right.
and you went with BP at two years
Yeah.
and you did the direct energy at two years.
Yeah.
How does that sound, Liam?
So two years for BP, two years for direct energy?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I mean, these are yesterday's prices, but from, from day to day, we don't really see much of a material change. Maybe the numbers are going to be slightly different, but, you know, things are pretty, pretty steady on a day-to-day basis.
What's the, what's the?
I mean, I'm, go ahead.
What, what's the rate this morning? Has it changed any?
Uh, so, so on, on Thursdays, there's a data release from the, the EIA, which is the governmental energy industry. So they release some new data at 10:30 every morning. So usually that's when suppliers can formulate their pricing today.
So they're going to be releasing new data this morning then? At 10:30?
Yeah. Yeah. So, so usually all pricing on Thursdays comes out after 10:30.
Okay. Well, maybe we'll call you back after 10:30. Or, or, you know, they'll, the commissioners will be here. So you could reach back out to us and let it, you know, especially with the electricity, the prices are pretty close.
Yeah.
So if you could reach back out to us, we could make a commitment right then at 10:30 and know there wouldn't be any other changes.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I Yeah. I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll have, I'll have BP and NRG know to get us pricing as soon as they can. And we can, and I can, do you want me, should I, should I coordinate that through Gwen? Probably.
No, you can coordinate that through, directly through the commissioner's office unless you're going to, are you going to be there, Gwen?
Yeah.
Okay. You can coordinate it through Gwen and she'll bring it over here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Awesome.
That way Jen doesn't have to check her email.
Yeah, that would be great. That works.
Yep.
Perfect. I will get right on that.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Perfect.
All right, my friend. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I think we're good.
All right, everyone. Have a great day and I'll be in touch pretty soon. Thanks, guys.
All right. Talk soon. Okay. Bring it over as soon as you get it.
Yeah, you don't need me for anything else, right?
No, bring it over as soon as you get it.
I will.
All right. All right. Item three is talk about recognizing national, the National Public Safety Communication, telecommunications week. We have Justin, we got Justin here. We want to recognize Justin's efforts and the efforts of our dispatchers. You know, we've gone through a big transition in that department with the technology. And so far, I haven't heard a lot of complaints, which is usually, all I ever hear is the complaints. I never hear the good stuff. But I haven't heard any complaints, you got any operation there. And you guys are doing a great job. So congratulations and keep up the good work, I guess.
I just want to say that I'm pretty proud of the dispatch job. I've worked with them since 69. And, you know, they've been a valuable resource to Farmington and one I call you, you know, for, for different things. A lot of times it's routed through dispatch and it's, they do a great job. Appreciate it.
Justin, while you're here, do you want to fill them in on the the grant, on the COGS grant?
Yes, sir.
Let them, let them know where, where we're at.
Where are we? We took delivery. Equipment is here. We just need to sort and distribute at this point.
Yeah.
Bronzer is going to be the first out the door.
That was a promise I made.
Right.
Yeah.
So we're in the final stages of that. The only question I had for the administrator and commissioner was, are we going to do any type of agreement with the towns for this equipment?
That's a good question. That's a really good question. I mean, what, what would you propose?
Some type of agreement acknowledging that it is.
They should be insured. They should be ensuring it maybe.
Yeah. That it's county equipment will do the yearly maintenance while it's under warranty, but any damages or that type of stuff is covered by the town that we issue that equipment to.
Yeah.
And I can come up with some graphs from.
Come, come up with some graphs. Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Just something to cover up and at least acknowledge it's the county's equipment.
The other thing too is that sometimes, well, we, we have, we want to be a little careful because if we acknowledge it's county's equipment and there's some, you know, peripheral damage to it, that implies that the county is going to replace it. So we want to be a little careful about how we word that.
Yeah. 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 Makes sense.
So, and Diane just has something to report in relation to that exact thing. Okay.
Well, yesterday, Justin turned in invoices because the, the total project in grant is for $715,000. And he turned in invoices in the amount of $670,000. So before we go ahead and pay that, I talked to Ray about wanting to draw down on the COGS grant first, knowing that we have the money in our bank account before we go and pay this bill. Normally we pay our bills and seek reimbursement.
Right.
But in light of
Like what's going on in Washington, you know?
You just never know. So I was able to do it a same, same day ACH. So the money is in our bank account.
It's shocking.
Yeah, I can't believe that.
So I asked Diane, you know, we will pay Motorola in the upcoming weeks. It's not going to be this week or next week. We'll pay Motorola in the upcoming weeks once we distribute some of the equipment and, and
Make sure it works.
Yeah. Make, just make sure. We, we won't be late, but we'll, you know, we're going to, we'll stretch it out just a little bit and considering also, you know, it's, it's a better than a cash flow. I mean, ISOs is over a million dollars. So, you know, we need to get that. We want to get and one's got nothing to do with the other directly, but let's keep the money rolling. And we want to get, and one's got nothing to do with the other directly, but let's keep the money rolling.
Yeah. Uh, just let you know, Justin, the commissioner's received the communication from the sheriff. Raising, uh, the, the, the operation. Uh, and couldn't be here this morning, wanted to be, but couldn't be here, uh, so I just wanted to share that with you as well.
Thanks, sir.
All right, you guys good anymore? You want praise, want to heap on this guy?
Yeah, really.
Well. If there's any issue going on with that equipment, because, but you know, this has been something I've been wa- I've been wanting to do for, you know, I. Fifteen years, you know, so, uh, I'm glad we finally got there. Glad we got federal help to do it. Yeah, so if there's anything that comes out of that that we ought to be aware of.
Kind of good stuff, okay.
Great, good.
The officers can actually key their radio and talk to us.
Yeah, really. Yeah, they'll have to use their own cell phones.
Yeah, uh, you know, and I think this, this is just kind of the. You know, the cherry on top of the sundae, you know, getting consistent equipment. You know, to all of the entities. And we did include the cities, even though they, you know, they're not part of our dispatch center, we did include meeting. Some of their needs as a, you know, as a result of this, this cops grant, which is. Why I think. It, it. Got picked up. Um, you know, so quickly is because it's a countywide distribution.
Right.
It's not just for one entity. So that was smart of Justin to, uh, make sure that, uh, we got sign offs from the cities, even though we don't dispatch for them.
Yeah. Okay, all good news. After all, after a couple of years.
Can you, uh, you, you please send her, send her the breakdown? We'll send you the breakdown.
Oh, and, and I'll tell you why I want to know, is that the next time there's public comment. Being the mouthpiece that I am, um, I will stand up and I will acknowledge it. But I think it's important.
We'll send you the whole breakdown of everybody, just so you.
I'm not gonna do everybody.
No, 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 but I mean, it's, it's, you know, this way you'll have a comparison and you'll see what it looks like.
If, if you guys want me, I mean, I'm more than happy to stand up.
We appreciate you doing that, thank you. Justin will.
If you're okay with that, I'll send it right to her.
Yeah, send, send it right to her and send her the whole breakdown that I asked you to do for me. Okay, thank you.
Okay, item four that you discussed.
Yeah, that one's on me, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, as you know, I've been, uh. For better or worse. Myself, Dave Ross from Hillsborough, uh, Kathy Stacy from Rockingham, and. I believe, uh, Chuck Nicholson from Rockingham are gonna be at Traveling Roadshow. To visit with the senators, um, as they look at the house budget, uh, for. Those areas that have been a significant financial detriment. To the county, and it's, it's three main areas, uh. There's a state law that says the county cap, uh, can't increase more than two percent. However, the house budget increases at three percent. There is another, um. We, we are encouraging them to give us back the money they stole from us. Uh, which was, uh, let me just pass this out, this is a flyer that we're gonna be passing out to the senators when we meet with them. Right now, I'm scheduled with the group to meet with four senators, starting this afternoon. Uh, I have a, I'll leave a list, so you'll know, the commissioners will know where I am on what day, I'll leave a list with Janet. Uh, but I'll still be reachable, you know, by phone, but I, I'll have to go to Concord. Um, yeah, I'll describe that in a minute. So, um. We're, they're rating the opioid trust fund, uh, which by laws to be distributed to. You know, the entities that participated, they're rating that and putting it in the state budget. They're taking the, um. We are trying to get back the money they stole from us on the enhanced F map. When for the first year and a half, they took all the money that, that was, uh.
Forwarded by the feds.
Forwarded by the feds to the counties, and they refused to. Give it over and we had to file legislation to get it for the, the next two years.
And they want to, they want to give us a, they're gonna give us an extended credit to give it back to.
Well, they want to, and we asked for it to come back in two years, which is approximately the same timeframe in which they took it. Uh, and they've. The, the powers that be in, in the house. Suggest that we try it over four years because it's more likely to pass. So in that case, what would pass the house is actually favorable to the counties. It's just stretched out over a longer period of time. And, um, the DEI prohibition, uh, in conflicts with our federal regulations, so we're gonna be talking about that. And the, the biggest thing and the biggest cost is the three percent rate decrease to every Medicaid provider.
Yeah.
Which is actually a fairly interesting concept, because the governor added money to the five oh four line, which is the line that pays for. Nursing homes and other long-term care services. Um, the house left the money in there, but then in House Bill two decreased the payments. So I'm not sure how that all reconciles. Uh, because as you know, leftover money in the five oh four line must be dispersed to the nursing homes, that's an existing state law. Because in the old days, they used to under, underpay the nursing homes and then use the leftover money in the five oh four line. To fund whatever else they felt like funding out of the Health and Human Services. So the county's got a law passed that says you can't touch that five oh four leftover money.
Rule.
Well, no, they have to pay it, they have to pay it at the end of the term, at the end of the year. So.
So what was the increase?
One-time payment. It, there's no.
No increase.
From, from, from the governor's budget.
A huge, probably about ten percent.
Oh, really?
But, but you also have to appreciate that some of that is money that's already owed, that the state just doesn't have to pay out. So it's not all set for an increase, but it was a, uh. Uh, for, I think it's a combination of three things. Money that this state already owes, as an example, Riverside's owed about eight hundred and three thousand dollars. That's thing number one. Thing number two, there's been a bunch of change in ownerships of nursing homes. And there is some back payments due as a result of that. And the third thing, um. Was going to be, you know, the, the cost of updating the rates. Uh, however, in, instead of any of those, um, the house, House Bill two. Uh, is talking about a three percent cut. Now, in the headlines of the Union Leader this morning, it said, and I'm gonna ask Janet to print the article. That the governor has responded to what she sees as she would like to increase in the house budget. As it moves to the senate. I couldn't read the article, uh, but I'll ask Janet to print the article, it's front page, leadoff headline in the Union Leader, if you could print that. That might be helpful to me, um, I don't want to make fool of myself in front of the senator this afternoon. Uh, because, you know, the senator might acknowledge that, you know, they're gonna go along with the governor, I didn't like to know what the governor's saying. Uh, so this, we're gonna pass this out when we, um, meet the senators. And, uh, I start with, uh, Senator Birds, Birdsell. Uh, this afternoon. Senator Lang on the twenty-third, uh. Senator Rosenwall and Senator Waters together on the twenty-fourth and Senator Gray on the twenty-eighth. So I'll be traveling the place I hate to go and that's Concord. Um. So those, those things will be, um, um. That, that'll be my mission. I, I guess they kind of want me because I'm like the, I'm the senior guy.
Yeah, and, and one, one of the things about the, the house budget, they don't have the information, they don't have the revenues. So their budget is kind of ludicrous, really, I mean, it, uh. When you end up, uh, at the end, or when, when the senate handles this. They have a lot more information to make better decisions and they probably will have more money.
Well, my hope is that, you know, there's a number of things in, in House Bill two. That have had cuts and we just want to make sure that, that the senators recognize. That these cuts, as they're applicable to the county, are cuts that are going on to the taxpayer.
How much do they raid the opioid trust fund?
Everything, they, they want to take everything that comes in it.
All of it?
Yeah.
How much is that?
All of it. Well, yeah, well, it depends on. The opioid settlements, uh, some of them were immediate settlements where they paid the whole thing in one year.
Right.
So some of them are stretched out over eighteen years, some of them are stretched out over different periods. So we've always had, we've never budgeted because we're never sure what's gonna come in, and obviously this is one of the cases. We, we, what money comes in, we put in the, in the county budget as miscellaneous revenue. And we have a line item for that and, and bring that money in there, but so far this year, we've gotten none. Uh, from, and I'm looking at Diane, I don't think we've got.
In twenty twenty-five.
No, we've got none, so, um, and I'm sure nothing's gonna happen with that until the legislature makes a decision about. What, uh, what they're gonna do with taking that money. Remember, the purpose of that money. Was that fifteen percent of it goes to the twenty-four entities that. File suit with the state, which includes the ten counties and fourteen cities and towns. Uh, we get a little penalized because Dover and Rochester, who are part of the fourteen cities. Their allocation comes out of our total allocation. Uh, but we still, you know, it's still been a differing amount of money, depending on whether it's an eighteen-year payment or a one-year payment. So the years in which we've had a one-year payment, it was, it was pretty good. The years in which it's spread out over eighteen's not, you know, it, it's still some money, but it's, it's not tremendous. The other fi- eighty-five percent of the money goes into an opioid trust fund. Which there is a committee that determines the distribution of those funds. Now, they distributed those funds, was it in twenty-three or twenty-four, Diane? When we got the big reimbursements for.
That was, wow.
MAT.
We got it last year, in twenty twenty-four.
So that was a distribution to cover us for MAT that we've run.
At twenty-three.
Yeah, for prior years. Um, you know, the hope was that they were just gonna keep that current. Meaning in twenty-five, they would open it up for our costs in twenty-four. And in, you know, twenty-six for twenty-five, as the money continues to roll in. But.
Steal it all, we're gonna be, we're gonna be paying for MAT.
If they strip it all, then, then we, we don't get reimbursed for the operation of MAT. And we also. So that's medication assisted treatment, uh, plus, you know, we also got reimbursed for, um, the operation of. Um, uh, men and women's. I'll think of it in a second, but, you know, in, in our, in our abstinence treatment programs over to jail, we also got reimbursed for that.
Right.
Um, and, and.
You know, the funny thing about it is, was is that when we put that trust together, because I negotiated that deal with, with the state. To create the trust. Um, I was assured by the attorney general and the governor that. That we wouldn't have a repeat performance of the tobacco settlement, which I negotiated in nineteen ninety-seven.
Thanks.
On behalf of the counties. And because they, the tobacco companies ended up, what people don't realize with, and all these, with these different suits. The real. Meat and potatoes here is that when, when the state was getting forty-four million dollars for the, for the tobacco settlement. They were supposed to share that with the counties, they did not, they raided it all and took and put in the general fund. They promised me that we wouldn't have a repeat performance here with the opioid trust fund, okay? Because I, I had, I was one of the principals that agreed to create the trust in the beginning, because I didn't want to create the trust. I wanted the counties to get the money directly because I didn't trust the state. So the state said, okay, no, we promise you, we're not gonna do that, we're not gonna raid the fund, we're not gonna do this, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna. Deal with drug courts, we're gonna deal with the MAT costs, we're gonna deal with all these things. We promise you, we're not gonna do that, and here it is, it's not even a year later, and they're raiding it, and they're taking it all. All of that transfers, all that means in the end. Is that this, these costs are gonna be borne by the property tax. Period. That's what it transforms to, we haven't budgeted for any of these things. So I'm sure Raymond's gonna let the senators know that, that this, this is a direct transfer, a direct transfer. Of costs to the counties, which we have not budgeted for. And it's, it's, it's abhorrent that they negotiate. An agreement, and that agreement was supposed to go for eighteen years. This wasn't supposed, this wasn't, this wasn't some, you know, well, we'll just, we'll take care of it today and not worry about tomorrow, this is supposed to be an eighteen-year agreement. And they're breaking it. Which is typical of what this state, that's why this, 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 that's why there's been such acrimony with the counties, with the state for years and years and years. Because every time we make an agreement, they break it. Uh, and it's just too bad that they're doing that, because it's, it's, it's wrong. And, let me tell you, the real, the real. Sad thing for the public. With the tobacco settlement, once we settled those suits with the tobacco company some twenty or some odd years ago, it was more than twenty years now. The governments were not allowed to sue the tobacco companies after that, for anything. The tobacco companies artificially increased nicotine. By three and four times, introducing into their cigarettes, they get people addicted. And there's nothing the governments can do about it, because they was, they signed off on the tobacco settlement. We have the same issue here with opioids. Part of that deal was that we will never ever sue any more pharmaceutical companies. For any type of drug addiction moving forward. I don't care what it is, make them up on the, uh, a drug tomorrow morning that makes you grow three eyes. Okay, out of your head, all right? We can't, the governments can't sue. That's the sad part about all of those settlements.
The other thing is, it, it brings into question the nature of the lawsuits. The nature of the lawsuits was that the money that was generated by the payments from the opioid companies. Would go to, to manage.
Drug addiction.
Which is why the counties got their share for MAT and, and, uh.
Yeah, the money was supposed to be spent on drug addiction. Directly.
Yeah, I have a question, you mentioned eighteen years, so does that mean that money is supposed to come in over.
Correct.
The course of eighteen years, because Rochester is sitting on three, uh, what, three hundred and fifty thousand, and we just went through. This process and city council will be making a decision, and we had four entities come in and, and make presentations. Um, so what. You're saying is it's over the course of. The next fifteen years or whatever. There will be.
There was money coming, the, the money, the money was being transferred to the trust, and then the trust would, the trust would determine. The people in the trust would determine how the money was spent.
The, the eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five percent.
But the fifteen percent comes out.
Fifteen percent comes automatically for our legal fees, because we had legal costs that were involved in.
Okay, and then the eighty-five percent gets divvied up between the county.
No, no, it's, it's the other way around, right.
Oh, okay.
The fifteen percent gets divvied up amongst the twenty-four entities, that were the original ones to sue. The eighty-five percent goes to the fund, the opioid trust fund. That, there's a committee in that opioid trust fund, that, that you make application to that committee, when they announced that applications are open.
Right.
And, and we, uh, applied and got approved for our therapy to the community at the jail. The, the male and female therapy community, which is an abstinence program. And, and for our cost for, to run MAT medication assisted treatment program. We applied and received reimbursement for the three years prior, which was the beginning of the availability. Of the settlement, and we were hoping then, instead of going that far retroactively, because. It's, it's a bit of a pain in the neck to gather all those costs together, you know, going back three years.
Okay.
We were hoping that it would go year by year. Um, so in other words, we were hoping in twenty-five that we would get money for twenty-four, or. My fondest wish is that we would get it approved for the year in which we're operating. And get reimbursed quarterly, like we do for drug court. I mean, I didn't think that that was such an unreasonable request, because they have the money. But now, instead of making that money available, the house, House Bill two. Is taking that money to offset the operation of the general fund.
Right.
Thank you for that explanation, allowing me to ask that question.
And on top of all that, the trust promised me. As I negotiated when the trust was established and I was supposed to represent the counties on the trust, government assumed it wouldn't appoint me. For a varying number of reasons. Uh. I met with the trust fund, the trust, and told them what, what should happen with the counties as it relates to the expenses of. I met with the trust fund, the trust, and told them what, what should happen with the counties as it relates to the expenses of M A T that we were, we were occurring, the, the expenses of abstinence program here. And that that should be an automatic, every year, uh, reimbursement to the counties based on the number of people you have in prison that have drug addiction and that you're required to give M A T services due, because the court said we had to do that. Okay, so based on those numbers, we would get an automatic reimbursement from the trust. And then they could play with the rest of the money and do whatever they wanted with it after that, but to make sure that the county will hold, hold.
Even if we don't get the money, we still have to provide.
You still got to pay for it.
And you gotta come up with the money.
We gotta cover the money.
That's correct.
And the property tax is gonna pay for it. That's the bottom line. And that's the way it is.
So even though there's, you know, there is.
I spent hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of hours of my time on this.
E- e- even, even though there's been everybody's little claim that there's gonna be no tax increases in this budget.
Yeah.
It, it's, there, there's no overt tax increases in, in, in the House's proposed budget. But there is hundreds of thousands of dollars just for this county in, in what they're no longer funding.
Right.
Um, that we're gonna be facing in, in the future, should the House budget pass. And, and with all due respect to Rep. Representative Petrie, he's absolutely correct. That the House, the, the governor's budget doesn't pass, the House budget doesn't pass, the Senate's budget doesn't pass. It's a committee of conference budget that passes. So I'm part of the, for lack of a more sophisticated term, part of the traveling road show that's going to just make sure the senators are aware of the impact on the county taxpayer if the House bill budget passes as, as it sets.
I got a question. What was the final number of the revenue shortfall? Because we're, I think the budget is what, fifteen point one two billion?
Six hundred and fifty million as of yesterday.
Six fifty, okay, so that, that's, uh, that's significant.
But, but with all due respect, Rep., uh, Commissioner Petrie, it's, it's a shortfall created by, by the legislature.
Right, well, we.
When you, when you cut out the taxes on, when, when the legislature.
Interest and dividend.
Interest, dividends tax and, uh, business, the business profits tax.
Yeah.
When those two taxes were cut out, that created the shortfall. The, uh, it, it's not, you know, it's a shortfall because taxes were reduced. So that'd be like saying, well, we're gonna create a, uh, we're gonna have a ten percent decrease in county taxes, and then say, oh, we have a ten percent shortfall. Um, you know, and so in fairness, the, the, the elimination of that seven hundred million dollars in, in taxes that were in effect in previous years is what created the six hundred and fifty million dollar shortfall this year.
Well, but, you know, we say you've got a six hundred and fifty million dollar shortfall, but in the last budget, we increased it by over two billion dollars. I mean, you know, so.
Well, that, that's true, but most of that was ARPA money, most of that was Biden's money that Sununu handed off these projects like they were, like they were, you know, like what Peppermint's handing money up to everybody, that's why his approval rating was so high. It was all federal money, it was all borrowed federal money that he was, that, that he was doing. And that's the bottom line, that's the reality of it. The reality of it is.
But you still got a one point four billion dollar increase, oh, you know, over from last.
Right, but that one, a lot of that, a lot of that was.
Uh, there's ARPA money, that's.
Federal money.
No, it's over a billion dollars in ARPA money that the state received.
Right.
So, but we're still one point four billion over, over, over two terms.
You're talking about in terms of overall spending?
Right.
Right, well, the overall spending, if you include the ARPA money, it was a bi- a billion of it included the.
While the ARPA money, I don't even think was increased, it wasn't part of the budget at all.
Well, it.
Some of it was.
Right, it depends, it depends. But in any event, you've got Medicaid expansion that was paid for, you've got the M C O contracts that were paid for. There's, you know, uh, we've got, you've got expenses that, it's the old shell game. We'll do, we'll, 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 we're gonna do all these things, and we're gonna worry about how we're gonna pay for it later. And, and then all of a sudden the bill comes due, and then they say, oh, wait a minute. They create, they, they create the crisis themselves, and then they turn around and say, oh, we got a crisis. Okay, well. Yeah, how are you gonna pay for it? But the rea- when they get done, and this won't get decided till June, you know that, and this stuff's gonna get done, decided by committee of conference in June. We won't have any idea of the impact until June, but I, yeah, unless they hack off, and you know this, Ray, unless they hack off entire whole programs up there, and I mean, hack them off. You're gonna get rid of a lot of stuff, okay? But these things that we're talking about right here are, you know, three percent increase in Medicaid contribution, three percent reduction in rate. That's six percent right there. Swing.
It's a million dollars.
Yeah, that's a million. And then you get the opioid, you get the M A T program, which is gonna be another, like, three, four.
You, you, you know, I did a rough calculation last night in preparation of, of this, about what it would cost to, if we kept everything the same, what it would cost the Stratton, Stratton County taxpayers, and it was just in excess of a million dollars.
Yeah.
Annual, annual.
Right, yeah.
You know, I, I.
And we don't have the money in the budget for that, so.
Of course not. Well, how would we know this was coming? How do you know this was coming?
Anyway.
Never trust a lie this way.
I know. We're all clear about lies and those sorts of bitches right there. Anyway, we'll see what they come up. Alright, so much for that.
So I wanted to just make sure you're aware I'd be.
Oh, I know, it's a frustration. You know, I'm not, this is the last time I'll act in the county's behalf on any of these lawsuits, because every time I do it, I spent, you know, I spent hundreds and hundreds of hours traveling around the state, trying to convince the counties to join in the opioid lawsuit, to try to convince them to create the trust. Because trust was the best one, even though it was not in our interest, because the state could promise them, don't worry, we won't raid it, we won't touch it, we won't touch it. We'll make sure you guys get the money. And Stratford County spent more money. I think Stratford County spent more money than any other governmental entity in this state dealing with drug addiction. Okay? More money than any other county, any other government entity, including Manchester, who was, Manchester almost the size of Stratford County, okay? Add them all, it doesn't make a difference, all of them. We've spent ten times more money in, in, in throughout our history dealing with drug addiction. Okay, whether it be the cost of drug court, whether it be the cost of medications, yeah, all of them, hospitalizations, you name it. And that was the reason why the, the, that was the foundation of the, of the settlement agreements, of the governments that had the expenses. Got the money, got the reimbursement. And the scary part is, is like I told you earlier, they can do whatever they want now. Drug companies can do whatever they want, very the end. They can create whatever they want, there's no more liability. They give you a, a pill to fight COVID, and it kills you, oh, well, sorry, you know? That's just how it is. Other than that, people wonder why I drink. Alright, we get a new business, Raymond? We gotta go to the spring bake sale pretty soon.
Well, I mean, it, it, Janet reminded me, I needed to, I need to, I need to bake cookies tonight, so.
Yeah.
Uh, for, for the bake sale, which I certainly will do. Best choc- best chocolate chip cookies. My fondest memory is.
Oh, my wife makes them.
My fondest memory was my mother and I baking that when, while we were waiting for my father to come home from work after school, so. I kinda, I kinda relived that memory, so, anyway. Yeah, it's because I threaten all my employees that they need to come and buy them, or it's gonna be trouble. And they're coming, they're coming, I promise. The only other thing I wanted to mention, um, Mr. Chairman, and it's been all over the newspaper, so I'm, I'm not yielding any information that hasn't been publicly spoken about. You know that there was a police pursuit up and down the highway, and a state trooper shot, um, a woman, um, and in Dover. So they took her down to, uh, Beth Israel, they took her to Portsmouth, then, you know, Portsmouth transfers them to their, their parent hospital. Uh, we were able, uh, I met with medical and with, uh, superintendent bracket to convince the hospital that we could manage her care. Uh, they were mostly keeping her down there, uh, out of, I, I, now I have to be careful, out of, uh, non-physical concerns. Um, so we can manage, uh, so we brought her here. So it's not another, uh, inmate that we're exposed to watching in a Massachusetts hospital. So we got her back in a day, um, it might have been two days, uh, that it took us to get her back. So, um, I'm, uh, because the poor sheriff was, you know, really stretched out, you know, um, and, and it's uncomfortable for our sheriff's department to go to Massachusetts to watch somebody, because there's always a question of our authority down there. So we are happy that, um, she's with us, and I spoke to medical, uh, at the jail this morning, and they are, uh, the explanation that was given to me based on my experience being a non-medical person, but all those years at Riverside is that they're making the best medical moves in the best interest of this young lady who was shot. So, some, some, some of what happens next is going to depend on how well her, at what stage we can heal up her shoulder wound. Because that's, even though he fired five shots, the only time he hit her was once in the shoulder.
Get him more training.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure that's the way I look at it. But in any case, I just wanted to let you know that that is, um, being managed, and managed appropriately. Larry, because I, I know that's gonna be a question, you know, it was all over the papers. And, and the pursuit was up and down the highway and, and, uh,
Yeah.
The fact that the trooper discharged his firearm to an unarmed person has attracted a lot of attention.
Right.
Now it's over the weekend, and I think we got her back on Tuesday, and it's happened, I think Sunday. Worst case, it happened Saturday, but I'm pretty sure it happened Sunday. I unfortunately watch the news obsessively to see these kind of things.
Alright, any other woman in business, John? Alrighty, I am, uh, okay, we got item seven, questions or comments from the public, and the agenda. Anything, Sue?
Susan.
Susan.
Um, I'm kinda going back a little bit, but, and it kinda prompted me today when you had the discussion about the power. Um, are we still in the middle of a solar grant or something? Diane was on like a Zoom call or something, but somebody else in the West?
Yeah, it was canceled.
It was canceled.
That whole thing?
The, the, the whole thing's been canceled by, um, the current.
The feds.
The current administration.
Okay.
Cancelled the grant. We even went so far as, because it, it was like three quarters done. So we went so far as to ask them if we could pay the last quarter of the money that was due. Um, they said no. That the grant, the project is canceled by the funding source, which is the feds in this case.
Okay.
So we tried, you know, because it might have been worth it. I would have tried to make a presentation to the commissioners and/or to the delegation to ask them if they wanted to fund the difference. Because there's about a seventy-five, I'm rounding this off, seventy-five thousand dollar grant. And if they were three quarters done, you know, maybe we could have got the end result for another twenty thousand dollars. Um, it might have been worth it to us, uh, but they would not, they refused to participate. We tried.
Well, one of the things you might have noticed is, uh, when Liam, you source, he said that, uh, the cost of, uh, gas energy was, uh, twenty to thirty dollars a megawatt hour. And if you noticed, the average for the state is sixty-five, he also said that. Now, it costs you, the last time I checked is thirty, around thirty, which is the twenty to thirty cost per megawatt hour. Solar and wind cost you about eighty dollars megawatt hour. But they have, when they produce it, they have to buy that for us, so we get screwed as a state and a consumer.
Well, I, I think, to be even clearer, wh- what we're talking about is the, the grid has to pay a certain excess amount for underused for megawatt hours that's underused by the originating source. Now, our plan, and, and you, as you'll notice from the documents, we use, uh, our annual estimated, uh, kilowatts about five million, well, over five point one two five million. So, I mean, our plan originally was to produce five million.
Yeah, five two.
So, so we would have just covered our usage, we wouldn't be one of the ones selling it to the grid. Uh, and, and it can be, also remember that, that we probably would have sought to produce more than the five two, simply because the five two is the estimated annual, it's the average. It's, it's gonna vary by season, so we would have probably looked, sought to produce around six, um.
Is that with solar, is that, is that?
That would have been, that's what we were looking at in, in, in this solar great, planning grant that we got.
Right.
And it.
We were gonna get.
Well, we got, then it, then it got taken away.
Yeah, so, just another comment, um, piggyback on something that you had said, George, about being optimistic. Um, there's been several large businesses and corporations, um, who have indicated that they're going to be investing billions and billions and billions of dollars, um, in, into the country for various, um, things. And in order to do that, they're also going to need energy. And how is that gonna fluctuate with all of this? And I'm just putting my two cents worth in as a constituent. Not having gone through all of this, and it's kind of an off-the-cup statement, but I'm making, without doing a whole lot of research, but I think to lock it up for the next two years would maybe be, i- in my viewpoint, prudent to, to do. Um, but that's.
Well, that's.
An off-the-cup.
That's, and that's.
That's, that's my off-the-cup.
Yeah, when we get to call back sometime between ten thirty and eleven, that's, unless something crazy changes, that's a worry.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it'll be in.
How does Mr. Petrie feel about it? Oh, excuse me, Commissioner Petrie.
I'm sorry, uh, no, hey, whatever you wanna call me, it's fine with me. No, I, I, I think it's a two, a two-year, uh, plan is prudent, because, you know, it's gonna, I, I feel it's gonna go down, because we're gonna be doing so much drilling and, uh, and, uh, you know, you're gonna have a lot of product that comes from that, especially gas pipe, the gas pipeline. If, if Trump can get a gas pipeline through New York, which is the, they're, they're holding it back. But, and, and we almost got, I think, a key, it was another one that was gonna come into New Hampshire, but it was coming into New Hampshire and then going into Massachusetts, which we wouldn't have benefited from, just like Northern Pass. We didn't have the electric from Canada, was not, we were not gonna benefit from that, but we'd have to put up with the eyesore of, of lines. Now, as, as a legislator, I, I wanted to, uh, I, I approved of Northern Pass if you buried a damn thing. And right, right in our, right away, down ninety-three, it would have been perfect. You know, and, and they do it in other states, but they didn't wanna do that, so, hey, luckily they lost out.
I saw Durham gets their gas from, uh, Turnkey.
Right.
They buried it along the highway, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they buried it, they buried it along the highway, yeah.
But, I mean, and, and, you know, of course, I don't know, I haven't researched, like, we get our natural gas from the Maritimes. And can they produce more to give us more and, and expand the pipeline that's already there? Now, the Tennessee, you know, that's another, that's the other one, and prices spike, I mean, you know, they have to actually close Georgia, because they have a plant in New, Newington, because the, the cost of gas, natural gas is so high. They have to close down a plant in, in real cold days, because, you know, of course, they use a lot of energy to dry the, the wallboard. You know, that's what, that's what they do there. And it's just, um, it's.
But, you know.
It, it happens several times a winter.
Nice part with this is it freezes, I mean, we.
Right, yeah, well, you know, it, it, and, and the prices are reasonable, I did some research for my own, and matter of fact, I'm, I'm in the process of switching over, it takes two to three months. switching over, it takes two to three months for them to, you know, get switched, switched, I don't know why it takes that long. We've got computers today, and then you can do it in two seconds, but hey, you know, I I gotta put up, matter of fact, I had a discussion with my tenant, you know, white her her light bill is two hundred bucks, I mean, it's actually difficult. And mine was actually less, which, you know, and I get.
You can put some solar panels in.
Yeah, oh, I, no, that's alright.
I don't pay no.
And I, I get, I get, uh, I get, uh, pinged on from, um, Paki Campbell, because of course he's big into that. And all, all your, uh, you've got friggin' solar panels everywhere you look. But, hey, if he can do it, they will come, right? I think so, yeah.
You're right, well. Are there any other comments or questions from the public? You all set, Susan?
For today.
Okay. Item eight, so we're moving to non-public session for purposes of discussing personnel and contract negotiation. Second, okay, the role call, Commissioner Petrie.
Yes.
Commissioner Letters, myself, yes, the votes you know, it's okay, the commission will retire the non-public session. And uh.